I'd like to call this organizational meeting to order. My name is Lisa Posthumus Lyons. I am the Kent County Clerk, and it is my honor and privilege to serve the citizens of Kent County in that role. And today, it is my honor and privilege to carry the gavel for this momentary fleeting display of power. I will start by asking all of our county commissioners to please stand up as I will administer the oath of office. You should have the oaths at your stations and to sign those, then bring them forward to me. If they are not at your stations, we will distribute them after the meeting for you to sign. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of County Clerk in Kent County, Michigan, to the best of your ability?
County Commissioner.
County Commissioner. No, I'm County Clerk. You can be the county commissioners. Do you? Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Corporate Counsel. So now that you are all officially sworn into office, I will take the roll. Commissioners Boujack.
President.
Burrell.
Here.
DeBoer. Faber. Halsted.
Here.
Hennessy. Hildenbrand. Coleman.
Here.
Legrand.
Here.
McLeod. Merchant. Morales. Morse. Oliver King. Pakla. Sparks. Stuck.
Here.
Teal. Womack. Green. There are sixteen members present, five absent. We do have a quorum. At this time, I would like to call on Commissioner Green for the invocation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we begin the invocation, I'd like to ask that we take a moment of silence to reflect on the events that took place on New Year's Day in New Orleans, and pray for the victims, their families, and ask that God bring comfort to the grieving. Thank you. Heavenly Father, we gather today with grateful hearts as we embark on a new term of service to the people of Kent County. We thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon our community and for the opportunity to serve our neighbors with humility and dedication. We ask for your presence here among us, Lord, as we begin this important work. Grant us the wisdom of Solomon, that we may discern the best paths forward, the courage of Saint Paul, that we may stand firm in the face of challenges, and the compassion of Saint Teresa of Calcutta, that we may always remember the needs of the most vulnerable among us. We also invoke the intercession of Blessed Solanus Casey, a humble and holy man from our own state of Michigan, who served others with simplicity, kindness, and trust in your divine providence. May his life remind us of the beauty of service, the power of hope, and the importance of listening to the needs of those we encounter. Guide this board in its deliberations, that our decisions may be rooted in justice and truth. Help us work together with respect and charity, placing the common good above all else. May our actions always reflect the values of honesty, integrity, and service, and may we strive to be faithful stewards of the trust placed in us by the people of this county. We pray for all those who serve in our community, the first responders, educators, healthcare workers, and so many others who labor daily for the well-being of our citizens. Bless them and their families with strength and protection. Finally, Lord, we entrust this meeting, this board, and this county into your loving care. May all that we do glorify your name and advance the flourishing of all people. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, the first item on our agenda is the election of the Board Chair. I'm sorry. Let's reverse here and go to Item Six, Public Comment. Do we have any public comment on items related only to the agenda at this time? Any public comment related to the agenda today? Okay, we will move on to Item Number Seven, which is the first item of business, the election of our Board Chair. At this time, I open the floor for nominations for a Chair of the Board. The Clerk recognizes Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would like to nominate Commissioner Ben Green.
Is there support? Support from Commissioner Teal. Are there any other nominations? Is there any discussion? Okay, all those members in favor of Commissioner Ben Green for the Kent County Board Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Chair Green. My time with the gavel has come to an end, but you are all in good hands.
Thanks. Okay, thank you, Clerk Lyons, for helping us get the meeting started, and just want to briefly say thank you for the confidence that this board is placing in me to lead. I'm looking forward to serving with each of you. We will move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, the election of the Vice Chair, and I will open the floor for nominations or any nominations. Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, Chair Green. I nominate Commissioner Dan Burrell.
Is there support? It's been moved and supported. Are there any other nominations? Is there any discussion? Seeing no other nominations and discussion, I will close nominations. All those in favor of Commissioner Dan Burrell for Vice Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item Nine, the election of the Minority Vice Chair, and again, I'll open the floor for nominations. Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to nominate my colleague, Commissioner Michelle McLeod, for Minority Vice Chair.
Is there support? It's been moved by Commissioner Legrand, supported by Commissioner Oliver King. Are there any other nominations? Is there any discussion? Seeing no other nominations and no discussion, all those in favor of electing Commissioner McLeod as Minority Vice Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Congratulations, Commissioner. Thank you. All right. We will move on to Agenda Item Eleven, the Consent Agenda, and I will call on Vice Chair Burrell.
I would like to move the Consent Agenda.
It's been moved by Burrell, supported by Teal. Any discussion? All those in favor of the adoption of the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we will move on to Agenda Item Twelve, motions and resolutions, and I will again call on Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you, Chair Green. I would like to move Resolution One of today's date, appointments to various boards, commission and committees for 2025, brought to us from the Board Office.
I'm going to ask for us to take a step back. I wasn't reading the notes. We have to have a roll call, though, on the Consent Agenda. Thank you to our capable counsel for that and for our clerk for waving her arms at me, although I didn't see. On the question of the Consent Agenda, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda, Commissioners Boujack. Burrell.
Yes.
DeBoer. Faber. Halsted. Hennessy. Hildenbrand. Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant. Morales. Morse. Oliver King. Pakla. Ponstein. Sparks.
Yes.
Stuck.
Yes.
Teal. Womack. Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. The Consent Agenda is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thanks for the grace on that, everybody. So now, we will continue on to Item Twelve, and I will again call on Vice Chair Burrell. I'll correct my other error.
Thank you, Chair Green. I'd like to move Resolution One of today's date, appointments to various boards, commissions, and committees for 2025, brought to us by the Board Office.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner DeBoer. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution One, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. We will move to Agenda Item Thirteen, Appointments, and once again, getting his work in today, I will call on Vice Chair Burrell.
All right. Thank you, Chair Green. I move Item Thirteen of today's date, Appointments, and that we waive the requirement of Standing Rule 70 as it pertains to the appointments for the Gerald R. Ford International Airport Board, as the proposed appointments are all renewing appointments for our commissioners.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Coleman. Any discussion? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Green. We live in a world, you look at Washington, D.C., and Lansing, and how they act, and especially this past term in the legislature in Lansing, where one party pretty much excluded everyone else from the opposite party for having a voice in that. Now, I don't have any problems with the standing committees. I mean, I've been advocating for that for numerous years. The one thing that glared out at me, we always hear about the common good for the county being servant leaders. It just strikes me that we have a commission made up of twelve Republicans and nine Democrats. But if you look at the standing committee leadership on that, which then, the leadership positions on that, and once again, I'm not questioning any of those appointments, but then those leaders are then set on the executive committee, where the Republicans will be six to one. Now, I would hope that if we really, truly want to work together, I mean, I think that's the first thing. I mean, the executive committee, I think, is a committee that's supposed to advise the Chair on issues that are abound. With something like that, six to one, you know, I don't know if we can do anything about it this year. That's fine, but maybe something to consider next year is that, yeah. I just think the Dems should have a little bit more leadership on saying that we've added a committee that's somewhere along the line. And like I said, I consider myself a servant leader. I think on my political career of forty-five years, I've always looked and stood up for the common good and what's best for the community as a whole, not just my specific interests, though sometimes I'll strongly represent those interests. I always want to at least hear the opposing viewpoint and to make sure that every opportunity is made, that all voices can be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein, and I will call on you in one second, Commissioner Steck, but I just wanted to confirm that we will, the reason for the, we do have in our new Standing Rules, the opportunity for an at-large commissioner from the minority party to be appointed to the executive committee. I intend to make that appointment so that we will have another voice on there. With the transition to the new Standing Rules, there was a bit of an oversight until earlier this week, that those commissioners who are serving in Vice Chair roles on the new standing committees also serve on the executive committee. That was something that was just kind of missed in the deliberation. And because of the original setup on that, I had considered leaving that space vacant, but because of that gap between the minority party and the majority party that you mentioned, Commissioner, we will be making an appointment of another Democrat to the executive committee. I've spoken with Minority Vice Chair McLeod briefly on that. We're going to have some conversations, and my intention is to do that at the next meeting in January. So appreciate that. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. I just wanted to hear what that sounded like. Chair Green, good. I was just going to follow up as well, just encourage the Chair to exercise the right that is granted under the new rules that we adopted last year to appoint us an additional Democrat to the executive committee.
Thank you. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, just want to thank Commissioner Ponstein for bringing that up. It's something I brought up intensively in my first term, looking at the executive committee, and just knowing that there's a lot of discussion on some of the things that come down the line on the agenda, and it's just good to hear somebody from the opposite party want to see closer to equal representation. And there would be exactly equal, and the voters have spoke on that, but just good to see our commission and our Chair doing all they can to hear other voices on the executive committee.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other discussion? I appreciate that, and I share the same sentiment. I'd like to see the minority party represented on that and part of the decision-making process, obviously. So we will take care of that later this month. No further discussion. This is a voice vote, so I, all those in favor of Item Thirteen, the Appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We will move on to Agenda Item Fourteen, Public Comment Related to General County Matters. We ask that comments be kept to three minutes. Welcome. Please say your name and address.
How you doing, everybody? I'm Dee Jones. Happy 2025. Glad to see my dog, Robert S., up there. Glad to see a black person, a black man, and be back on Kent County Board and all of the black leadership that we have. And it's cool to see my guy, Dan Burrell, as Vice Chair. I like Dan Burrell. That's my guy right there. Happy to see you leveling up. First off, I just wanted to say all positive energy and love to everybody. It's going to be a good 2025. I'm excited. Before 2025, I actually got to get on Channel Eight, and that TV interview, I was live, and that actually went viral, and I made it on Yahoo, I made it on Microsoft again, and all of these different publications. So I got to bring 2025 in with some positive energy and a lot of powerful individuals saying that they liked the TV interview, they liked their passion, and just me being genuine and just being true to myself, and hopefully you guys stay true to yourself on this commissioning board, too. I'm very excited to be able to do the esports activations in our partnership with Kent County Board, the Youth Justice Influence Esports League. We'll be starting up a new season sometime next week, actually next Tuesday. I'm excited about that. I actually got a call from Kent County Juvenile Services, and they let me know that the Detroit Lions called them yesterday. They got a package from Kent County, somebody from Kent County sent the Lions a package, but the head of security and safety said that he really loved it and that we can actually bring the students to the Detroit Lions facility anytime we'd like from Kent County. So I'm very excited because the Detroit Lions really love what we're doing out here in Kent County, and being able to bring kids from Kent County probation and surveillance to the Detroit Lions facility and checking out the suites, the players' locker room, the head coaches, all of that stuff, those are just beautiful experiences to be able to give kids that live in poverty, that probably would never even have the opportunity, and hopefully, you know what I'm saying, those positive experiences transitioning the positive results into life. And so very excited to be able to give back, to continuously partner with you guys, and I'd like to thank you guys, because today I'll actually be putting the games on the game systems. The Kent County Courts actually purchased the games that the students will be playing, so I didn't have to go to my partners. You guys actually invested into the students, into the youth, and me actually helping the school district build six esports labs, and eventually doing these esports activations and giving out some scholarships and at least $2,000 plus cash back to the students, and then the CEO of Comic Con saying that he'd like to partner with me now that we actually have teams and infrastructure. We'll be doing this at the DeVos Place in November, so I got this longevity vision of what I'm going to be able to do, and hopefully I can show the billionaires what you can do with positive infrastructure and public infrastructure, using it for the public good and the common good, and not just the kids at the Christian schools and the Catholic schools, which I believe they deserve opportunity, too, but everybody deserves it for the common good.
Thank you, Dee. Anyone else? Pastor Scott, welcome. Please say your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Daniel Scott, longtime resident of Kent County, and congratulations, Chairman Green. Have to get used to calling you that. Chairman Steck, former chairman. By the way, your first name, Benjamin, means son of my right hand. That's not my right hand, but the Lord's. First of all, congratulations to the new commissioners, and again, I want to say to you and all the usual ones, returning ones, that you're in my prayers, you and your families, not individually, but as a group, and if you ever have any personal needs, prayer requests, that you want to give to me, I'd be happy to. Pray for you. I just want to remind you that you all took an oath today, and you said you would, you swore that you would uphold the Constitution of the United States and the state of Michigan. I want to remind you what part of the Constitution says. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general It goes on to say that you'd faithfully keep the duties of your office. Later says in the Michigan Constitution, "Under equal protection, no person shall be denied the equal protection of the laws, nor shall any person be denied the enjoyment of his civil or political rights, or be discriminated against in the exercise thereof." You know that I'm here to constantly speak up for the most vulnerable of our county, and that is the unborn. And according to Holy Scripture, they're just as much of a person as you and I are. So if you're swearing to protect all citizens, I would remind you, in the eyes of the Lord, that includes the unborn. And it says in Scripture that if we make a promise or swear to an oath and do not keep it, the Lord is not happy, and He will hold us accountable. Deuteronomy 23:21. So I'm just going to be here on a constant basis, as long as the Lord gives me breath and strength to be here, to speak up for the unborn. Again, less than two miles from where we're standing today, at 4:25 East Cherry, they continue to murder babies, also at Corwell Health, Metro Hospitals. That's what's happening. Please, let's speak up for those that need our help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. City Manager Washington is here. Welcome. Please state your name for the record, though we know who you are.
Good morning. Mark Washington. I'm your neighbor from 300 Monroe. Where I get the privilege to serve as city manager, and I just wanted to wish you all Happy New Year, and to say how delighted I am to continue to work in the greatest county in not only Michigan, but I believe all of the United States, and be part of one of the greatest cities in this area. Look forward to continue this work. I know this work is, you take it very seriously, and I can't tell you how thrilled I am to continue to work with one of the greatest county administrators, one of the best decisions that you have made. My mayor was here earlier, good to stay, but I wanted to also share his congratulations as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, and we look forward to continue partnership with the city of Grand Rapids and Mayor Legrand. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to Agenda Item Fifteen, the Administrator's Report. Al.
Yes, good morning and welcome to our 2025 Board. Congratulations on some hard-fought victories, and the administration is eager to work with you as we continue the transformation that we've been working on for a number of years now. I think we'll find that 2025 will be another very busy and full year with much to accomplish on behalf of our residents and businesses. So Happy New Year, and it's a great day.
Great, thank you. We will move to Item Sixteen, which is Reports. For those new commissioners, reports is a time when we give information to the board about the various committees and boards that we serve on, if any, is ready for communication. So I don't believe there's going to be anything after the holiday break, but are there any reports? I see none. We will move on to Item Number Seventeen, Miscellaneous. Does anybody have anything for miscellaneous? Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair Green. Welcome to your new position, and I'd like to welcome all the new commissioners to Kent County here on our board, and we look forward to working with you together in a bipartisan manner so that we can get things done for the residents here in Kent County. So thank you very much for your service, and I look forward to serving with all of you this year. Welcome back, Rob.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Green. So thirty minutes, I actually love that. I had the opportunity yesterday to sit on the Ottawa County Commission meeting for their organizational meeting. It went over a little over two hours. They had almost forty public comments, but it was interesting to sit back and listen to the comments, which were basically directed at the commissioners on, you know, what they think about Ottawa County, and a lot of things that come up is that, just how great of a county it is. They appointed John Teples as their Chair. John's a friend of mine. He sat on the Judison Public School Board when I was on the Granville School Board. So a lot of things are going great there, too, but, you know, I sat back, having strong family roots in Ottawa County. You know, the same could be said about Kent County. This is a great county to live in. I'm happy that I've lived here all my life, and there's plenty of opportunities, but, you know, when I think of Ottawa, Kent, even Muskegon and Allegan, you know, I think that what makes these counties stand out is our working relationship as a unit called West Michigan, and I, you know, it's countless and endless of the amount of things that we share together, and I know different counties have different problems, but I just encourage in 2025 that we, you know, continue to look for ways to partner with our close counties and maybe reconnect with Ottawa County. I know the media just had a field day on trying to do everything they can to embarrass the commission that was there, but, you know, it's a new day. They've got a new chair, so I just raise that point. I think we've got a lot to be proud of in West Michigan, and Kent County is a part of that, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else for miscellaneous? Commissioner Womack.
Just happy to be back and just very thankful to God for modern technology, being able to watch the work of my wonderful colleagues, past, present, and new people coming on, but watching this county work together and watching some of the meetings and just some of the things that are coming in Grand Rapids and the infrastructure changes, just very proud of my colleagues here and glad to be back working with you. I'm glad some work was done during my vacation on the sustainable business part, because a lot of people looked at it in the eighties and nineties when we were coming up like 2030, 2050 is so far away, and we knew we'd be running out of room for our refuse, and this brings us together, whether Grand Rapids, Wyoming, Cascade, a lot of people are depending on us to help solve that problem. So just glad to see the sustainable business part back on track and hope we keep that as a priority, because as people are talking about the soccer, the amphitheater, I'm equally excited, but I know that this renewable energy that we can do from recycling is going to be a large benefit, and we need to keep that sustainable business part at that same level as we have enthusiasm for our entertainment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Womack, and welcome back. Anybody else, miscellaneous? Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to acknowledge that we have a couple of past Kent County Board Chairs in the room with us. It just reminds me that we've had many decades of great leadership in Kent County, and congratulations to Chair Green, as I'm certain he will continue that trend.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman, there are big shoes to fill, certainly former Chair Steck and some of those in the room today. Thank you for being here. Anybody else? Okay, well, I'd like to just say- Okay, well, I'd like to just say once again, thank you all for the confidence that you've put in me. It really is a tremendous honor to serve in this position, and I'm really looking forward to leading this group, working together with all of you to see what great things we can continue to achieve for the county. My family's here today, and we, I was telling my daughter last night that we do this because we want to make the world a better place for her and for her brother and for all the kids and grandkids that are in the room today. So, that's what this service is about for me, that hopefully we have the opportunity for, to give our kids and our grandkids a better Kent County than the one that we grew up in, and we've had a pretty good one. So, I hope that you guys are as eager as I am to continue on that work. We've got a great foundation to build on and looking forward to doing that over the next year and beyond. So, with that, oh, I also was asked to remind everyone that there is a reception in honor of our new term, next door, room number...
Three.
Three-eleven. So please join us there for some refreshments, and then Lori has wanted us to communicate that we are available for family photos or individual photos or spousal photos or whatever you'd like, if you want to take a picture. So, with that, I will call on Vice Chair Burl. Laura German.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move to adjourn subject to the call of the chair to Thursday, January 23, 2025, at 8:30 a.m. for an official meeting.
Is there support?
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.